Okay, today is Tuesday already January 24th, 2023. I call this meeting to order, where the clerk please call the roll.
Trustee Feichter?
Here.
Trustee Frankie?
Here.
Trustee Listner?
Here.
Trustee Miller?
Here.
Trustee Prochnow?
Here.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yeah.
All board members are present tonight. Kobe, I saw your guys out with a big smile this weekend. They got to actually put some salt down. I don't think they dropped the blades too much, but at least they got out to put a little salt down. I mean, think about it, January 24th, I know we got, what, something coming this week, they think?
Yeah, tonight, actually.
Tonight, how much they calling for?
It's all over, three to eight is what they're saying somewhere.
So it could be good or bad?
This is over the next three days, it's not just all time.
Oh, just on one thing?
Yeah.
Okay, so, guys kind of excited?
Yeah, they are, finally.
Okay, I don't blame them.
Oh, me too.
I feel like Christmas, finally. Okay, with that said, tonight we have our Father Manuel from St. Nicholas Episcopal Church here to do the invocation, and we're gonna do a pledge, so if you would please rise, if you would please?
Before we have our invocation, Happy New Year to everyone. If I were back in my ancestral homeland of Malta, we do something very special. So if you're sitting next to somebody you know and love, I invite you to just hover your hand above their heart, and we would say to one another, "I pray from my heart to yours that God bless you."
Thank you.
That's very nice, thank you, that's very nice.
You're welcome. Thank you. Let us pray, in English. Merciful One, Creator and Provider, You have graciously gifted us with a new year, ripe with the potential of growth, of renewal, of promises to be fulfilled and relationships to be strengthened. We ask Your benevolence and guidance to fill, to overflowing, our minds and hearts, so as to do Your will, to be sister and brother to one another without prejudice, without distinction, and without reservation. Direct our actions for the betterment of society. Aid us as we build up and uplift the human spirit while we tear away the walls of segregation and isolation. Fortify our will so that we may fulfill Your divine mandate of caring for this planet You gave us as home, and for the care of one another. Bless each and all, Lord. May Your loving hands be our source of direction, as well as a means of parental succor. Bless our elected officials at every level of government, that they may respond to the needs of all, especially the underserved and those whose voices are so often ignored and paid little to no heed. May we embrace the words of the Apostle Paul, who wrote to the people of Galatia, "There is neither Greek nor Jew, there is neither slave nor free, there is neither male nor female, for we are a wall one in Christ." We pray this in all our supplications and intentions, in the name of the one true God, Creator, Sustainer and Provider. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. The flags to my right?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. God bless you, thank you. You're welcome. I turned my head, put it that way, so you're good.
You're a smart man.
Thank you. Actually, I think Father Yulon told me, because I'm Catholic, but you said your church actually its origins is from Catholicism, or actually Catholicism came, I think you said you came first, I'm trying to remember now.
Well, you know, I said that because I gotta be partial to where I'm from, of course.
Well, when I went to a service about four years ago, five years ago, and on five years now, when we rolled out the Oak Grove Cares Program, I was very fortunate, all the places of worship here in Oak Grove, from the Buddhist temple through all the different churches, allowed me to come speak about it to the community. And it was very well received, I think, and I was at Father's service there on Ridge, and it's very similar to Catholic service, and I thought, I said, by God, it felt like I was at Catholic service. And that's what you were telling me about, the origins of the two churches and the ties and all the rest, so it's good to see you again.
Always a pleasure.
We're gonna be doing again.
Thank you.
I appreciate you coming by. Of course, we got plenty of nice dark chocolates here for you.
Oh, fantastic.
To enjoy for the new year.
Great.
I want to thank you, and I was talking to them before the board meeting, we're coming up on our fifth anniversary, we're gonna be looking to do something unique, we're gonna be announcing it a little bit, and I want to go back again to the churches and let them know what we've done in five years, how well it's been received, how much we've done and accomplished, and we'll keep working on that, because with the fentanyl coming to this country and everything else, it's getting worse, not better, we won't find a way to fix it, so I want to thank you for all your support.
We'll work together, absolutely. God bless.
Thank you. Take care.
Thanks, all.
Okay, we move on now to the approval of minutes of January 10th, 2023.
I move approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting held on January 10th, 2023 as submitted and dispensed with the reading.
Second.
We're watching by trustee Listner, and second by trustee Feichter, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Let the record show you that's approval. Move on now to the mayor's report, and then the trustees' report. I only have a few items here before we have some presentations tonight. First off, last Thursday, January 19th, we had a chance to meet with Senator Laura Murphy. Senator Murphy has represented us for a number of years here in Oak Grove. She gave us an update, we gave her some ideas, some assistance we could use in some areas, and she does an absolute phenomenal job for this community. It's also good for us, I think she's a third-ranking senator in the state of Illinois, which helps us a lot in getting things done and moving. So, we want to thank you for taking time to stop by, you know, we've known Laura for a while, and again, I can't thank enough for all the help she's done. Then on Friday, Mr. Matt Urona and I had a chance to go to our county commissioner Kevin Morrison's roundtable in Schaumburg, and President Tony Preckwinkle was there. We know Tony well, we've done a lot of projects, remember Tony was instrumental working together with us, and Dan Cronin was DuPage County Board President. The three of us were able to work together, Cook County, DuPage County, and this village board at getting Bussy Dam done. Remember, Bussy Dam was the first flood project between multiple counties ever done in the state of Illinois. And we came together, get it done, and it also has been a long time, let's be honest, Oak Grove doesn't flood anymore. We don't have the issues we've had before, the yards and all the rest, so that project has turned out to be a godsend for this village, and we're very excited about that. Next, real quick reminder, on Saturday, February 4th, from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m., downstairs, right, you want to do an A, B, and C still, right? Is that the board's desire?
Yes.
Okay, so, we want to set up an A, B, and C downstairs.
For coffee?
For the coffee. Okay, there's no blood drive, that's why I know we're safe. So, we'll be down, right down the stairs here, A, B, and C, we'll have a coffee for the board, it's easier to hear, they're the big fans and stuff in room E, and come by Jiraj Bakery, Free Jiraj Bakery, always good, coffee, ice, or orange juice and water. Come by and tell us anything you want questions about. If we have an answer, we'll give it to you, if we don't, we'll get back to it with the answer. So we love doing that, and looking forward to people coming by. Also, as you know, last board meeting we announced Wingspan is doing the development at Arrentites Road and Higgins Road, the new development for their retail and rental component at the old bowling alley site. And the response we've gotten from people has been very nice, we thank them. It seems like that location, as we said, we thought about eighty, ninety percent of people wanted that, picked it when they met with us, talked to us, submitted writing, and the follow-up we saw after the announcement just reaffirmed what we're doing. Now again, where we stand, because I know people keep asking me, and asking the board, right now we're working due diligence with Wingspan. They're gonna finish up some final site elevations, the final look of the buildings. There won't be the square look you've seen on the original, those are just conceptual ideas. We're now getting more serious on it. Also, traffic flow is gonna be adjusted some, from ideas from the residents and ideas from our staff. So that will hopefully be being put together and somewhat formalized to bring to the public again. We're thinking end of February is hopeful, but probably by March, we'll have another open house. Come on by, take a look at it, this time it's obviously only one developer, give us your input and ideas, then we can start wrapping it up, because the next step after that will be the plant commission. And again, you have a chance to give input ideas at that time, when the plant commission views it. So we want to get this project moving along. As we speak now, they're gonna be reaching out to all the different businesses there to work out their wants and needs when they move to the new location they're gonna build for. So this is their due diligence with them now, and then again, we'll get moving along. Again, the bank will close the end of April. Our Rose Garden should be done by April, moved down to the location, if any get a chance, drive down Higgins in front of the new tech park, and look how they're already changing street baby rays. You won't recognize it, you won't already recognize it. So the work's being done, we're excited about this, and it should be moving on quickly. Last item, look at him, Mr. Trustee Frankie, last item.
It's not over yet.
I'm gonna read War and Peace now for the public, the entire book. Now, just so everyone know, I know the article appeared in Tom's paper. Our car, the Makers Wanted race car, will be at the Chicago Auto Show on Monday, January 20th, or February 20th, apologies, Monday, February 20th, it's gonna be at the auto show. Matter of fact, everyone that walks into the auto show, the first thing they'll see is our car sitting there. So we got a great location, we're gonna have the car down there, some giveaways for the young people that come by. It is President's Day, it's called Family Day there, they expect about thirty-eight thousand people going through there. So they'll get a chance to see the car, take a picture with the car, hear about Oak Grove Village. We've got little giveaways that promotes Oak Grove Village, Makers Wanted, so we're very excited that we're being part of the auto show, and it should be a lot of fun, so if you're, everyone's pretty much closed on President's Day, something to do, go down to the auto show, get a chance to see the car up close, have some pictures with it, have fun with it, and enjoy the auto show at the same time. So, it's coming along, just think about it, what is it, five months, almost five months exactly till the race, so it's coming quick. So with that said, I would like to have the Lions and Lions Club, I'm Lions Club, I should say now, join me down there for some recognition for the holiday awards? Please come on down, ladies? And gentlemen? Who's gonna be the guest speaker? Okay, just so you know, they were here, if you remember, for the Halloween decorating contest that was done not long ago, and this is now for the holiday decorating contest. As you know in Oak Grove, we've done this for a number of years, and we thanked the Lions Club and the Leos Club before for helping sponsor and judge the winners. So if you're not happy, don't get mad at the boards, get mad at the Lions Club, it wasn't us, no, but we support their view. You know, but actually, if you didn't like the choice, I wouldn't vote for any of them, if they ever ran for an office or anything, right, Elva? I'm joking, Elva's running for the high school board again, does a great job, so, little plug, there you go. So, if you want to take over, it's all yours.
Thank you, and where, do we have who's here?
Ah, yes, the one that could not make it was the Dugo family.
Okay.
They could not make it.
And where's the?
Well, first, why don't you introduce everybody?
Okay. Hi, everyone, thank you. My name is Karen Hicks, I'm the current president of the Oak Grove Lions Club, and one of my favorite things is definitely getting the chance to go out and see all the lights. I want to thank all the residents for decorating their homes so nice at the holidays, because it just makes it such a wonderful time. So with me, I have our vice president, Sabrina Swanson. I have Alva Kreitzer, who is one of our longtime members. Karen, I just, she's a brand-new member, Sweden?
Sweden.
Sweden, Karen Sweden, Barb Laytonen, our past president and Lions sister governor, and I don't know.
Greg Wotzeki.
Greg Wotzeki, Greg Wotzeki, he's also one of our new members with our, our club. So, I'm glad everybody was able to come out with us and let everyone here know that we appreciate being a part of the community, doing the things that we do to help out in whatever way that we can. Our first award is for best overall holiday decorations used on an apartment or a condo. And we did this because we want to make sure that even if you only have a small space, you get a chance to be a part of things. It's a little bit more challenging to fit things in, but this place, I remember it because, you know, you could see it from far away. There was a lot of lights in this area, it was rocking. So Rachel and Victor Dula, please come on up for your award. And if you didn't, if you didn't believe that they have sparkle, take a look. Add music. This is awesome. Great job.
Oh, that looks so nice.
This is awesome. Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Well, real quick, hang on, some quick questions if I can. First off, you also get chocolates, so I want to get some chocolates. There you go, drink. Okay, now, have you ever decorated before, or is this the first year you've done it on your place?
Did it last year.
Okay, so you still, what made you, because we always said, if people, if people were to decorate every unit on those buildings, you know how beautiful that would look, the planes would land there. But I'm serious, can you imagine the effect with that many units? It would go great.
We'd knock out the power grid.
God, men would love you, they'd thank you. But I mean, yours looked beautiful. I can't imagine if all those units did it, how it would stand out and everything, it'd be gorgeous.
You have mostly him to thank, he did all the work.
You did all the work?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so what made you think, hey, let's go big, you know, most people think it was a house. People don't think to do it when they got a condo or something like that. What made you think you want to all of a sudden do something like that?
Well, because people wouldn't expect an apartment or condo to just like, it, it's a fifth-floor unit, people wouldn't expect an apartment or condo to be anything super special, and I thought, no, we're gonna, we're gonna make it for everybody to see. And we actually went and checked out some of the other houses, and the one house was crazy, it's like I learned a few things by looking at that house.
I tell you, nice and being so high, it was easy spot.
Oh, it's so easy.
It was easy when I drove by to look at it, I just saw the winners, so it stood out, so thank you. My hope is, you set a trend that your neighbors will start doing stuff like that, because it could really be something special. But I want to thank you for your effort and your time, and the outfit today, that's the only, I just picture you enjoying those glasses.
I'm gonna do that for the next meeting.
Yeah, not for me, yes. I'm still trying to see if I, you know, when we did the heart thing, I didn't feel a heart, but then I did, I thought, well, he's an attorney, of course, attorneys don't have hearts, so it makes sense, so it worked out good. Just joking. Well, congratulations, enjoy, thank you again.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it, thanks again.
Thank you.
Kevin, before I forget, we put you, wanna keep it protected. Thanks again, great job.
Elva? That's really cool. What's the address? Where, where is the apartment?
Hang on, hang on.
Village on the lake? Yes. That's really cool. We'll be sure we're driving next, next year we want bigger and better.
No, 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 hey, it's free FaceTime, elections are coming up, more times on TV, that's good. Go ahead.
Okay, who do we have that? Okay, this, this award is for the best overall holiday decorations used on a townhouse or house. So it's somebody who's got the, you know, the lawn too, so they don't, you know, they have a little more space to work with. And there were a lot of great candidates. It was a tough, tough call picking out everything, but this one did have a lot of votes, so obviously, they did, because they're the winner. Craig, and I'm gonna match this up a little bit, Mulfelder, Muehlfelder? Okay, you don't, you don't mind changing it for us, do you? Yes.
Good job.
Yes. Very beautiful, hi.
Great, beautiful, congratulations, good job.
Thank you.
Come on, step up, we'll talk a little bit.
Sure.
Okay, first off, there's a lot, I'm not sure if Channel 6 is showing now on TV now, how long did it take you to do this?
I've been doing it for about thirty years, that's how long I've lived in Oak Grove. I put it up pretty quick, to be honest.
So you got kind of laid out?
Yeah, I kind of know how to do it, yeah.
So do you think, do you, before you even do it, do you kind of write it down on paper, or you have it in your brain, how you want to?
It's up here, I'm an engineer, so it's kind of, you know, figure those things out ahead of time in your head, yeah.
So, but now, you've got it all down, or is it still up?
It's down now, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because sometimes you see people still stuff up, sometimes longer afterwards, it's more exciting putting it up sometimes than taking it down, so, more enthusiasm. So, how many years have you been, you do this all the time, or something you just started doing?
Yeah, I, I moved into Oak Grove about thirty years ago, I've been doing it every year.
Okay.
And not a lot of people do it in my development, but I do it all the time, and people come by and, you know, they say, hey, good job, they like it, so I keep doing it.
It makes you feel good.
It does, it does.
Well, we, makes us feel good, we want to thank you for doing it, it's a beautiful place, and, you know, also, you have any family here with you, are you by yourself?
I have my sister and my fiance back there, yeah.
Okay, so, after he gets his picture, he's got no excuse, there's plenty here for him, okay? You're good, so, we'll go get a picture, I'll hand it to you on the way down. Thanks again, give my hand again.
Okay, and we have another award tonight, this is for best theme display, and it was a nice, bright, beautiful house with Whoville decoration, so it was really cute. Okay, Barb Purvis, please come down. Very, very nice, I loved it.
Okay, our first question, what made you pick Whoville? What was the thought behind that?
So, this is my daughter, and one year she got very sick and ended up in the hospital on Christmas Eve, so we teased that she was the Grinch that stole Christmas, so when she came home from-
Oh, that's nice of mom to say, isn't that good? You're in the hospital sick, and you're the Grinch, okay.
So when she came home from school the next year, I put up a couple Grinch decorations, and it has just grown every year since then. She comes home and helps me.
Oh, so the two of you do it?
Yeah.
Oh, is that nice? I mean, it looked great, I mean, it really gets you, it did get you in the mood, it got you thinking and all that, so, you did a great job, and so who's the one that kind of laid it out? Both of you together, or one of you figured it out?
Yeah, I think both of us together. It's taken a couple years to get it just quite right, but.
The wind was fighting us bad this year, so.
Well, especially with the cold Christmas and the snow and stuff, so, well, it turned out great, and it's nice that mom and daughter can do things like that together and have fun. I still don't like the fact that she was doing it because you're in the hospital, but I'll give you an extra chocolate, you'll be fine. We thank you for a great job, it looks good, and congratulations on that.
Thank you.
So hang on, before you get the picture. There you go, you got, no, you got more coming than that. Okay, so you all good? Okay, I want to go get the picture, before you go, get the ladies all one, hang on, ladies and gentlemen, Elva, here you go. There you go, Barb. Huh? Oh, come on, we're talking about the Lions Club.
Correct. I've seen the address of.
What?
The street.
Can I see the picture?
Oh, you know where they're at.
Well, that house, Jeff, the trustee Frankie, point, that house is on Wisconsin, the other house was in Talbot's Mill, what's, what's the street? Deep Woods Court? Deep Woods Court, and then Wellington, what, 700 Wellington? Yep, 700 Wellington, the other one. So next year, make sure you visit those areas, I'm sure they'll be up again, so enjoy that. Real quick about the Lions Club, Lions Club does a lot of great things here in the community. Remember, the Fourth of July celebration was originally started by the Lions Club, and we kind of partner with them now to do things. The Lions Club does a lot of good things for the community, they give a lot of things back to the community, Glasses for the Blind and other events that go on, and we can't get, we wouldn't have a village we have today without the Lions Club. Matter of fact, Lions Club donated the first ambulance for Oak Grove Village, a long time ago, remember the sticker on the ambulance, all that, when I was a kid? Yep, it helps out with the DARE program, remember, Oak Grove was one of the last towns we believe strongly in DARE, and we do that with the young people in sixth grade here in Oak Grove, and Lions Club sponsors the T-shirts for the kids and all that. So we thank the Lions Club for all you do for Oak Grove, it makes it a better community, we appreciate you volunteering and all your work, and we're glad you're still going. We're talking just tonight, I think we have two groups left, the Rotary Club and the Lions Club. I mean, we don't have the J.C.'s anymore, we don't have the Kiwanas, I mean, we have a lot of groups that have gone by the wayside, so we thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for still volunteering and giving back. Matter of fact, a lot of our trustees at one time were Lions Club, I know trustee Prochnow was, trustee Listner was Lions Club, trustee Feichter, so half the board used to be, so we thank you for still doing that and making the village better. So again, you know what, now I owe you each another chocolate. But we thank you again for our job well done.
Thank you, Mayor, and everyone else with the village board for all the support that you've given us, we appreciate that too.
We're there for you. And next year for the Fourth of July, we have, hopefully, the third time on a streak out, KC Sunshine Band, and we do fireworks like never before, so we're looking forward to it, we thank you, pardon? Yep, and Lions Club sell food that day, so come by, have a good time, and thank you for everything.
Thank you, guys.
Take care. Folks, if you want to get going now, the ones got the awards, you're welcome, go ahead, take a chance now, thank you. Okay, one last thing before we go on to trustees' report, and I want to read it now. Unfortunately, Nancy Vanderwill could not come by tonight to get this. Believe it or not, yeah, one time, Oak Grove, we talked about earlier, there's gonna be a blood drive coming up when we're talking about the date. For a number of years, we never had a blood drive program in Oak Grove, and it actually started fifty years ago, this month. January 1973 it started, and I mean, think about it, I wasn't even born yet, Ms. Nicklebach was in his forty-eighth year here at that time. But no, it's something that's done a lot of good, so I, even though Nancy couldn't be here, Nancy was a trustee at the village at the time, and she actually helped get this going, so tonight, on her behalf and all those help start the blood drive in Oak Grove, the Village of Oak Grove Village proclamation, on the fiftieth anniversary of the Oak Grove Village blood, community blood- the Village Elk Grove Village proclamation, honoring the fiftieth anniversary of the Elk Grove Village Blood, Community Blood Drive Program. Whereas in January nineteen seventy-three, former trustee Nancy Vanderwill organized the first community blood drive donation here in Elk Grove Village. And whereas Elk Grove Village has organized several community blood drive donations annually for the last fifty years to support the need for blood donations as part of life-saving medical treatments. And whereas the blood donations from generous donors are meaningful, because every two seconds, someone in the United States needs donated blood or platelets. And this need can only be met by blood donors who donate in advance, because blood supply cannot be manufactured, and there's no synthetic substitute. And whereas there are countless patients who have been assisted over the last fifty years, in part thanks to blood drive donations made at the Elk Grove Community Blood Donation Drive. And each blood donation has a potential to help hospital patients within our community. And whereas every blood donation given by donor can save up to three lives and treat a variety of patients such as cancer patients, surgery, organ transplant patients, patients with chronic illnesses, and accident victims. And whereas a significant drop in blood donation in the United States is that to a national blood shortage emergency, which can cause a delay in life-saving medical treatments for patients. And whereas Elk Grove Village recognizes that the Elk Grove Community Blood Donation Drive is crucial in alleviating a national blood shortage and ensuring that hospital patients in our community are able to access the blood and platelet treatments they need. Now therefore, I, Mayor Craig B. Johnson, and the Board of Trustees, and the Village Elk Grove Councilor Cook and DuPage, Illinois, do hereby proclaim, January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, is Elk Grove Community Blood Donation Day in the Village Elk Grove Village, in honor of the fiftieth anniversary of Community Blood Donation Program, in recognition for all the meaningful contributions of blood donors through the years, day of this twenty-fourth day of January twenty twenty-three. So, we'll make sure we get this on to Nancy, pass this on to her. And again, people don't realize, we take it for granted, what people have done over the years to make Elk Grove a better community. And this is just one more example of that. Now, when she donated time as a village trustee, she was on township board for almost forty years, finished up as township supervisor, and gave a lot to this community, and again, the blood drive is just another example. So we thank Nancy on that, and we're sure nothing but the best. Move on now, trustees report, trustee Schmidt.
Yes, several things to report. First of all, trustee Prochnow and I attended the Patient and Family Advisory Council meeting last week at the Election Brothers Hospital, and the topic was spiritual needs of the patients. Also, I have some rather sad news to report tonight. That one of our retired firefighters, Richard Keyworth, we got word today that he passed away this morning. If anybody knew Richard, or as we call them, Dickie, he was in the fire department for many, many years. He was a big guy, he was member of the Lions Club for many, many years. And you would always see him out at the Fourth of July events with his big cowboy hat, over selling by the popcorn stand, and the big buckle, the big belt buckle. He was a very friendly guy, very outgoing, always had a positive attitude, and he will, he will be missed. He was a good guy, and a lot of respect from his fellow firefighters and from all of us in the police department throughout the years. He was a good guy, and the condolences go out to his family. And the other thing that I had to report is that our Sister Cities group met last week, and we're gonna hopefully start our student exchange program. Where we going into the school in March and start talking to the students, the junior students, and we hope to have our student exchange program up and running again, it was stopped in twenty twenty because of the COVID. But that's past us now, we'll be in contact with our counterparts in Termini and Madese and Sicily, and everything's a go on there, and we hope to get that program going, and we hope to have our student exchange up and running again. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Schmidt, trustee Prochnow.
Uh, thank you. Former trustee Nancy Zarnik has asked me to announce for her that applications are now available for the Zarnik Heffren Scholarship Fund. Nancy has started this scholarship fund many years ago in honor of her husband, and now Jim Heffren. And they've raised so much money, I'm pleased to announce that they're going to be giving away ten one thousand dollar scholarships this year. So applications can be found at zarnikgolf.com, C-Z-A-R-N-I-K-G-O-L-F dot com. And applications will be taken later this spring, I'll get more information about their website. And I encourage all students to apply for these scholarships, it's not based on academics, it's just based on participation within your community, so try to get a scholarship, those thousand dollars adds up, there's lots of scholarships that are gonna be available this spring. Also, Chris's Victor is having their winter farmers market every other Saturday. They just had one this past Saturday, so the next one will be Saturday, February fourth, from eight AM to one PM at the Chris's Victor Church on Arlington Heights Road, across from the movie theater. Come on out, and they have some lovely, they have some produce, they have some other items available, fresh baked goods. And it's just a nice place to go and visit with your friends, too. So remember the farmers market on Saturday, February fourth. And I will repeat my Saturday, my, my snow shoveling lecture, even though we haven't really had to use it yet.
Tomorrow you might.
By tomorrow, we might, I don't know, I, I woke up Saturday, Sunday morning and saw the snow was out, and I had my coffee, and I finally said, all right, time to go. Put on the boots, put on the gloves, put on the hat, open the front door, and the snow went all melted already, so I was saved by the bell on that one, but it sounds like there, there is gonna be snow sometime, and when it does come, please be a good neighbor and friend to people, shovel your sidewalks, shovel your driveway, if you have the ability to help out a handicapped or older neighbor, please do that, we'd like, we'd like to keep our pedestrians on the sidewalks where they're safe. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Listner.
Thank you, Mayor. Yesterday, Deputy Village Manager Jablonsky and I attended the ribbon cutting at Louisville Tile and Pro Shop. And we were representing you naturally, Mr. Mayor, and they're located at sixteen fifty Howard Street. Remember, that started out as the tennis court, yes.
And/or tennis.
Oh, that's where it is.
Yep.
It's a big building.
Yeah.
Yes.
And it, the owner and CEO is Matt Saltzman, and the manager for the Elk Grove location is Philip Sluka. And they're a distribution company that's been owned since nineteen fifty-five, and they've grown into the leading independent distributor in the Midwest, with thirteen branches across six states. Illinois, Indiana, Kentucky, Michigan, Ohio, and Tennessee. And it, we weren't there very long, but it was, it looks like a very nice run-up operation, and something maybe, Steve, for the, your committee to take a visit sometime in the future. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Listner. Trustee Feichter.
Okay. I also have to mention that a scholarship that is now coming up for the Community Character Coalition. This scholarship is for high school seniors at Elk Grove High School, St. Viator, and Conant. They must reside in Elk Grove Village. And the amount of this scholarship is two thousand dollars. We're giving away three two thousand dollar scholarships. The deadline is April eleventh. So any students that want to apply for it have to have it in by April eleventh. Where would they get these scholarship applications? From all the school counselors have been given it. It's gonna be on the village website, on the Community Character Coalition website, and various Facebook pages. We really hope that we get a lot of people applying for this, because this is a little different with this scholarship. We're not asking or making the major decision on this based upon academics. The major areas that we're looking at are, what, number one, what have you done for the community, for Elk Grove Village? That's what we're looking for. What kind of activities, what things have you done during the years? The second thing is, what have you done at your school? What kind of activities, what contributions have you made? Then later on, for a lesser point value, is academics and an essay. But we're really looking at contributions to the community, very, very important. And as I said, the deadline is April eleventh. And you can get it from school counselors and all these different websites. And it will be awarded at the May ninth board meeting. And this scholarship is offered through the Community Character Coalition and the Friends of the Library. That is one announcement I wanted to make that I thought was very important for people to hear. Also, our tourist organization, Meet Chicago Northwest, their Restaurant Week is coming up very, very soon. And they, they need to have people, our restaurant owners in Elk Grove and all throughout the district, sign up for this, and what it provides, it doesn't cost the restaurant anything. If they sign up for it, they are committing to either have a special menu or a ten percent off menu. And if they do that, they, hopefully, this is gonna be really marketed out to the community. We're spending forty thousand dollars, Meet Chicago Northwest is, I should say, to promote this Restaurant Week, we do this every year. Chicago has a much bigger Restaurant Week, but we have one through Meet Chicago Northwest. They, they do this, and trying to help the restaurants improve their businesses, and a number of Elk Grove restaurants every year participate in this, it's a real good thing. I should also mention that Meet Chicago Northwest just recently won an award. They were honored to be a proud winner of the Sixth Annual Stella Awards from North Star Meetings Group. The Destination Marketing Organization received a Bronze Stella Award for the Best Convention and Visitors Bureau and Destination Marketing Organization. And they're very, very proud of this, this distinction, this honor. It's among other honors that they have won, it's a good group to represent us. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Feichter. Trustee Jeffrey Charles Flanky.
I just want to add on that I was able to talk to Heather Larson for In the Grove Show on EGTV. And two of the restaurants are in Elk Grove that are part of this, Rocco Vino's and Real Time Sports. So you're able to get out to, from the third to the twelfth of March. Check their Meet Chicago Northwest website to see what other restaurants in the area are, but of course, we want you to go to the Elk Grove one, so. Rocco Vino's and Real Time. That's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Miller.
Well, I have no scholarship to report, and so I have no report.
Okay. Thank you. Move on now to the Accounts Payable Warrant for January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three.
I move approval of the January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three Accounts Payable Warrant in the amount of five hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars and seven cents.
Second. We have motion by trustee Listner, second by trustee Feichter. Jen, can you call the vote, please?
Trustee Frankie.
Aye.
Trustee Listner.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Prochnow.
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt.
Aye.
Trustee Feichter.
Aye. Motion passes six to nothing. Today, we have consent agenda items, Mr. Knickerbocker, A as in?
Ambitious.
Mm-hmm, that's only three.
What?
There's only three syllables. I gave you a four syllable, A letter upstairs.
Yeah, but I'm still in shock from hearing that.
Okay, let's see if you do better, through L as in?
Lazy. Kinda goes, you know, it's the A in the Z.
That makes sense. What does the lawyer start with, what's the lawyer starts with?
Ambitious.
Okay, so we have a consent agenda items, A through L, I need a motion.
So move.
Second.
We have motion by trustee Listner, second by trustee Frankie. Anybody in the audience on the consent agenda tonight? None? Any board members, anybody else have anything? If not, record the vote as previously demonstrated, six to nothing. Moving on now, there's no items of regular agenda, Plan Commission, Mr. Roan.
We have one item under Plan Commission. On January sixteenth, the Plan Commission met to hear PC docket twenty-three dash one, with petitioners seeking a special use to operate a truck and trailer repair center in the I-two zoning district with an associated variation from the zoning code. It was the consensus of the Plan Commission by a six oh vote to recommend approval of this special use to operate a truck and trailer repair center in the I-two, and grant a variation to the zoning ordinance to allow two principal buildings on the lot.
Okay, I know the petitions are here tonight, does trustees have any questions or comments or concerns?
Do not.
Anybody in the audience? If not, I need a motion to prepare documents by the village attorney?
So move.
Second.
Motion by trustee Feichter, second by trustee Frankie, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Let's see, record, and has approval. Folks, you're good to go, it will formally be adopted at our February fourteenth meeting. You do not need to return, since it passed unanimously from the Plan Commission and tonight from the Village Board. It'd be on the consent agenda, which is a mere formality, so you're set to go? We want to thank you for working with the Plan Commission, working with the village, making the investment here in Elk Grove. We greatly appreciate it, we wish you nothing but the best of success. So thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay, anything else, Mr. Roan?
Nope, nothing under.
If you folks want to get going, you're more than, you're more than welcome to. Thank you. Okay, move on now, Recycling Waste Committee, trustee Feichter.
Good news from the Recycling and Waste Committee, we are going to have our paint and motor oil recycling day coming back again. This time it will be Saturday, May sixth, between nine and twelve, at the Public Works Facility. And then, document destruction and electronic recycling. That will be on Saturday, June third, at nine AM. So, I will be talking about this more in the future, giving more details, but right now, if you want to write those dates down, May sixth, June third, they're big deals, and they're something that I think lots of people in the village take advantage of them. Also, Christmas tree lights. We have piles of them out here against the wall in the village hall. And more and more people every day are turning ones in that they don't need for next year, they're done using them, they're burnt out, whatever. Drop them off here, we'll recycle them. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Feichter. Judiciary Plan and Zoning Committee, trustee Prochnow.
No report.
Capital Improvements Committee, trustee Schmidt.
Yes, on June sixteenth, the Capital Improvements Committee met with staff to discuss our twenty twenty-three roadway maintenance program. And it was approved under our consent agenda under item K. And it involves the resurfacing of six point three miles of residential streets, three miles of, of our business park streets, and the intersection of Devon and Bussey, for a total mileage of nine point six miles. In addition, there'll be another seven point four miles of pavement rejuvenation for the streets that were resurfaced last year. The streets will be published, the locations of these rejuvenation program, and the resurfacing program will be published in the upcoming edition of our village or newsletter. So you can refer to that, to find out which streets in the, in the village will be worked on this summer, and that concludes my report.
Not all the streets, though.
No.
We move on now to the Cable Television Committee, trustee Listner.
No report.
We move on. We move on to Youth Committee, trustee Jeffrey Charles Flanky.
Even bigger news. We got scholarships. We have seven one thousand dollar scholarships that are given away from the Youth Committee with partnership of the Elk Grove Parks Foundation. Just like everybody else, you can download the application from the Elk Grove Village website, or go to your high school and talk to your counselor. Get the forms in by May fifth, do not wait. Try to get it in as soon as you can, we will tell the winner the week of, or the winners, the week of June fifth. And then probably the June board meeting will have you come down and recognize you, so. Just like everybody else, there's a lot of free money out there for you to go to school. You know, we keep getting more and more applications, so get yours in early, but you're foolish if you don't try to fill these out. The money's there for you to use for school. The money's there for you to use for school and would help out yourself or your parents, for sure. So we'll all be talking about our scholarships for the next three months, so, sorry. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Move on now to Information Committee, Trustee Miller.
So the recent addition of the villager newsletter has been out, and I'd like to just highlight a couple of things I think that are very important for the public. Upcoming Neighborhood Watch Meeting, that is this Thursday, January twenty-sixth at seven PM in the Village Hall, Meeting Room E. This is to discuss the crime trends that are happening as well as other police-related information. If you have any questions, please reach out to Crime Prevention Unit at eight four seven three five seven four one five one. Another thing that I think is very important to point out is regarding the federal Real ID deadline has now been extended until twenty twenty-five. You have a couple of years, so you can still travel with your regular ID, but it has been extended due to, for two years to May seventh, twenty twenty-five. So please check out this edition of the newsletter. There are many ways to find information about what's happening in our village. If you have Instagram, if you have Twitter, if you do not have that, you're welcome to call the village if you have any questions. Please try to stay informed. And that concludes my report.
They just keep kicking the add. It's been now probably six, seven years since they first.
Right.
I mean.
Two years, three months now, even more?
Yeah.
Do you want to bet it's going to get extended again?
Probably.
To the Secretary of State's facility. I went there the first time. They said you didn't have all the paperwork you're supposed to. I said, oh, my God, I thought I brought everything with me I could possibly use. They, oh, no, no, you need something else. So I went home, had to get one more item, brought it in there, and they said, oh, yeah, this is right. Now, I did that right away when this came up because I thought, they, they said, you've got to have it for flying. If you're going to fly an airplane, you've got to have it. And now it keeps on getting put off, put off, put off. I don't understand.
I'm happy because I haven't gotten one yet, so. You haven't either?
Yeah, a couple of years.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Miller. Business Leaders Forums, Trustee Schmidt.
No report.
Health and Community Services, Trustee Prochnow.
Uh, thank you. On January fourteenth, we, we sponsored, the village sponsored our first blood drive of the year. We had forty-nine pints collected, which could potentially have saved a hundred and forty-seven lives, which I think is awesome. The next blood drive will be on April first. And just to recap, for the year two thousand and twenty-two, we collected a hundred and fifty-nine pints, which could potentially save four hundred and seventy-seven lives, which I think is just amazing, especially recognizing that today is the fiftieth anniversary of all this. I'm even happier to inform everyone that our employees have started their own employee blood drive. And they're having regular employee blood drives, which is just a wonderful thing for them to do for our community. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Move on now to Personnel Committee, Trustee Frankie.
Uh, no report.
Airport update, nothing reported yet. Making some progress along the flight quiet. We'll get more information when it comes along. Parade Committee, we did have our meetings again. Our next meeting won't be till March. We announce our, you know, first responders as our grand marshals and the theme. Midsummer Concert Classic Series, Mr. Knickerbocker. You should know it by heart now because we had a meeting just two weeks ago. Let's go reverse. Who's our last band?
I do know it by heart.
When?
I forget her name, Karen Wilson or something like that.
Ann Wilson.
Ann Wilson. Karen, Ann, they're common names.
Who's our third concert? Which would be at Rotary Fest?
Um, American Rejects.
All American Rejects.
All of them?
All American Rejects. All the American Rejects will be here. Who's our second band, Mr. Knickerbocker?
The Spinners.
Very good.
I don't like it when you put this in.
How about the fourth band?
The Oak Brook or Oak Ridge Boys.
Close enough. And our kickoff concert on the Fourth of July at Rotary Green with the fireworks spectacular will be?
As promised by Trustee Frankie.
Fifty fifty.
The Casey and the Sunshine Band.
You got it. So looking forward to them. That is only five months away.
Wow.
It goes fast. It goes fast. Looking forward to that.
And before that comes Memorial Day.
Before that, well, I gotta get to that. That's our Special Events Committee.
Okay.
Mary Johnson. That's our next event is Memorial Day. I gotta read the whole thing. If I don't read, I'll forget it, you know?
That's you.
Right, Mr. Knickerbocker? We don't want to forget, do we? Right? You're in Elk Grove right now.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much.
So yes, Memorial Day celebration inside Rainshine, Warm Gold. Memorial Day Day, special event, we're excited about that. No report, look at commission. And first off, we should give kudos to our village manager.
Why?
He was picked to go for jury duty.
Yes.
He went down there. He is currently serving on a jury. So he goes down to Daily Center in the morning, came back for a board meeting tonight. Look how happy, excited he is. And I asked, I said, Matt, why would you do all that? He goes, Mayor, to spend quality time with you, it's well worth it. So bonus is coming. Good job. And, but no, honestly, Matt, we do thank you for serving. A lot of people don't want to serve. Matt, we thank you. I mean, it's.
I didn't say I wanted to.
Matt, I'm giving you a good bonus points here. So, okay, any report from you while you're sitting on jury duty?
I have no report.
No report. And from our acting village clerk, Jen, any report?
Um, early voting is going to be held from March twentieth through April third at the Village Hall. The hours are Monday through Saturday, nine to five, and on Sunday, ten to four.
Okay, so Sunday is different. So ten to four.
Yes.
Okay. I think during the presidential election, they made it longer to match up.
They did.
But now this, they went back. Okay, so March twentieth, it's only two months away. So actually, eight weeks from yesterday, so looking forward to it. And again, thank you. The judges love.
Happening here.
Coming to Elk Grove. They do, they love it. So thank you, that's kudos to you. Um, there's no unfinished business, any new business items for trustees tonight? None? Helen, how we doing? She gave me a date, I gotta get my calendar. I'll let you know, should be good, but I'll get my calendar checked. Jane, anything going on?
Aye.
I know we gotta go out and take a look at the cemetery. By the way, for those who don't know, I sat next to George Bussy, the township supervisor, and he is willing to talk to us about taking over the cemetery. Yes.
Very good.
He's receptive to the idea. Yes, he is. So we're gonna have a meeting, talk about that and the Elk Grove Cares Program. It's expanding. We can now help young people. So, which we had that restriction before, so we'll meet, talk about both. We sat together at the meeting and he said, yeah. He goes, I think we can work together. He goes, you're plowing the street now. We plowed the parking lot now. So he goes, work with, you know, the sharing houses and all them that run it, but yep, so that may become to Elk Grove. And that's special because we are the only cemetery that have a Revolutionary War veteran there, but not one, but two. We have all the wars, Civil War, War One, and I'll tell you, it is really a special place when you go there. I mean, the history behind it and all that. So, good news, Jane, we're gonna be talking further and then might give us a little more oomph to get the flooding issue from the tollways fixed to stop the erosion stuff. So we'll be talking, keep in touch. And one day, we gotta go out and, I know, walk it and talk about some things. So, thank you. Jane is with the Daughters of America Revolution, does a lot of work recognizing, doing things for the cemetery. We thank you for that, appreciate it. Anybody else? Any other questions? We're good? Yeah?
Good afternoon, good evening, board. My question is.
Hold on just a sec.
Name and address?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Turn the microphone on.
Good evening, board. Michael Urban, one seventy Will Lane, Elk Grove Village. Just coming forward because the Bussy Woods Development Project, it was said to be eighty percent favored, the Wingspan Project. Is there any data in terms of comments, summaries, or anything made public in terms of that's the one going?
We've got, when I said eight, I said, I think originally eighty, eighty-five percent. That's our guess with people talking. Whatever was, we have comments from the public that you can get copies of, and it's quite a thick file. And, you know, you can get, obtain those. Comments we got from phone calls, people talking to us that night, other times, and then even the recent, after, I think they're, Harold did an article and stuff, and other locations that goes online. The ones online were like a hundred percent behind it, the counts from people. So like I say, we're just saying, it's definitely overwhelming. People wanted the Wingspan Development picked. They liked the fourth one, they said, which was D, which was Wingspan. They liked the fact that they're gonna put in a bridge crossing over our intense road. They liked how they had things set. And we got all those counts, but yeah, they're probably correct. Everybody wants to get invited. I mean, did I keep track of everyone that told me something? From the Fitness Center to the Jewel to seeing them somewhere else? No, I didn't write them all down. But there's no question, I think the board, your view you get, I asked the board, your view you get from people talking to you, was Wingspan the overwhelming choice?
Yep.
Absolutely.
D. I didn't even know it was Wingspan until people said D.
So that's what we got to find.
Just, just inquire about transparency in terms of where eighty, eighty-five percent came from.
Yep, and that overwhelming, we'd say, and that's why I said, I guess, eighty, eighty-five. The one thing about transparency, I'm glad you brought that up. I've talked to other mayors recently even, they still can't believe what we did. No other town puts out plans from different developers for a location. And then no other town, if they pick the developer, when he comes up with the final plans, is going to put it out to the public again, ask for input comment. It just doesn't happen. Normally, what a town does is says, here's what's coming, it should be open soon, going through the commission. Not us. So transparency, we're probably the most transparent community in the world. We want people's input. We want their views. We want their ideas. And we've got a lot of good ones. The people that live on Forest came up and gave us ideas about traffic flow and all that. So they're the ones that back up to the development. So we love that. So, yep, we're proud of the fact that we're so open, we're proud of the fact that we got input. And what's nice is the view of the people matched up with what made sense as far as the developer, especially being local, all that. It was a win situation all the way around. So we're excited about that.
Is a Wingspan representative going to come forward? Anybody that works with the company, developers, engineers, going to be coming forward in terms of this is why we chose development, in terms of we want to do business at Elk Grove and all that?
Well, they'll be there when we, when we do the plan.
Because I haven't seen any Wingspan official at the open house.
They were there, but they were told not to say nothing. We wanted people's unbiased opinion, unbiased views. So all four developers had people walking around the crowds during the open house. We did not want them talking. We wanted the residents to be talking. We wanted the residents to give us questions. We wanted the residents to give their views and ideas. We wanted them to hear them without being influenced, without being swayed, anything like that. So, no, we did not want to do that. Now, will Representative Wingspan come forward? Yes, they will. When we have the public hearing at the Plan Commission, they will be here. The Plan Commission will ask questions, and at Plan Commission hearings, the public has a right to ask questions. So again, completely wide open, completely transparent. That's why we like doing things at Elk Grove.
All right, thank you, board, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, appreciate it. Have a good night. Thank you. So, anybody else? Mr. Rob, how you doing, buddy? Okay, look good. Huh? Yeah? How you feeling? George?
Excellent.
Excellent. There you go, remember, excellent. Anybody see him lately? Is he, um? I know he's in Arlington Heights, no one knows how he's doing or anything?
Paul?
Yeah, Paul.
I'll see if I can find him.
Yeah, just curious. Okay, if nothing else, very nice meeting tonight, Mr. Frankie, not bad?
It's not bad.
Mayor's report was good, wasn't it?
Uh, yeah, you know, what you think is good, but I mean. It wasn't the worst.
Thank you. That's what counts. As long as I'm in last place, we got a chance.
No, no, you're improving.
Okay. I need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
You know what? I'm gonna say Trustee Frankie on that one, and a second by Trustee Miller. So Jen, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Listner?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Prochnow?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Trustee Feiter?
Yes.
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Motion adjourned, passes four nothing. Folks, next meeting is Valentine's Day, three weeks from tonight. I know that board will be swooning over me, so I understand. I accept it.
He wants to switch seats with me, so I can meet.
I'll give you some with a heart next meeting, I mean. Okay, meeting adjourned.